Demonstrance, which means if fifty percent of the landowners by count owning seventy percent of the land by area has to be both, the fifty percent and the seven, only seventy percent objects to a project, it is ended, it is done, and the improvement project is not moving forward. So because that process exists, it's beneficial to get as many interested landowners in on the potential projects at the beginning so that a significant amount of work doesn't go towards something that landowners don't want. So that's why we set up these informational meetings. We get information from the, from the landowners, you get information from me, and we can end something before it really even begins if there's not a lot of support. Or, or it can certainly limit, I mean, because no decision can be made, it can certainly limit and pare down what goes into the report, that is, the answer to the petition. Petition requires, since it's been filed, the petition requires a response in the form of an engineer's report. So that's a bit of the background information there and why we're here today. There are a couple of other important procedural differences with improvements that they're mentioning. The first is that any farmed wetlands, anything that the NRCS has considered a farmed wetland, not prior converted, under an improvement project, more than likely, the NRCS will consider those to have been converted. So it's important that if there are farmed wetlands or that you don't, if you don't have a wetland determination, I strongly suggest that you apply to get one at the NRCS office and that you share any information about wetlands with the district so that those can be appropriately considered in any sort of improvement project. There are some opportunities that if the improvement project still goes forward, that some of that can be mitigated, and there's some chance, the decision for the board, if they have the district share in those mitigation expenses. But that's only things that we can know if the landowners provide that information to us. That's all very important as far as the staying in the farm program requirements. Additionally, with any sort of improvement project, the code requires that the district, or the sub-district in this case, be reclassified for the new spread of benefits. Because the improvement project will likely benefit some landowners more than others, and certainly not to the same extent that the original assessment schedule had spread those benefits, that's why the code requires that reclassification be performed under any improvement project. So those are all of the procedural differences. Repairs don't require any of that, but I'm not hearing that, or, or even from our survey data of the tile system and the creek downstream, I'm not seeing that there's a big call for a sort of repair project. So with the historical data and the survey data that we collected, we did a tile capacity analysis of the sub-drainage district on the main tile. That's what's shown here, it's a lot of, a lot of numbers. But what this boils down to is this column here, column M, is the drainage coefficient in inches per day. That is the amount of rain that can fall on the area that is drained by the main tile that would be removed from the district in a day, in a day's time. So the lower section, from station fifty-six to station eighty-four, that's currently a thirty-inch tile, it is able to get rid of just, just under zero point one-one inches of rain in a day. The current modern drainage design standard recommendation from Iowa State, if there's good surface drainage, they recommend a half-inch, so zero point five inches per day, all the way up to an inch drainage coefficient, so an inch removal in a day for areas that are more potholed and more confined with their surface drainage. So the different segments there all have different capacities because it's all based on size and grade. Now additionally, mind you, this is taking into consideration that its system is all working as intended, that the joints haven't displaced, that the material is in decent condition. So it's really kind of a best-case scenario of what the capacities are. You can see the percent of the half-inch drainage coefficient, so it's anywhere between about an eighth of an inch and a quarter of an inch drainage coefficient, so inches per day, which is not too far off from what the systems a hundred years ago were designed to have been draining at. It's just, we see more and more heavier rainfalls, more consistent heavy rainfalls, so that's what's skewed the recommended and the designed coefficient higher than it was in the early nineteen hundreds. That then all contributes to what the required size, that would be the required size to provide the half-inch drainage coefficient. So the lower section looking at, to get the half-inch drainage coefficient at that same grade would require going to a fifty-four-inch sized top, which is significant. And another reason that would bring people here together, because, of course, any large-sized tile, of course, comes with a pretty significant installation bill. So all things just to consider and to discuss here today. There are some sections in there, it goes from the fifty-four to the forty-two back up to the forty-eight. We would, we would never jump down sizes like that. Essentially, what that means is that that, all the way through, would have to be a forty-eight because we've never stepped back down to a forty-two. Another thing is that these improvement projects are not, and all are not, you don't have to do all of it, you don't really have to do any of it if there's no interest. But there's nothing to say that you can't do segments or, or do the lower portion and see how much benefit the district receives from that and do more, more later. I just know that certainly not getting any less expensive, especially in recent years, and it's not being made any easier as far as regulatory requirements as well.
What size is the tile now, since you want a little fifty-four or forty-eight?
The tile now in the section that's for a fifty-four is a thirty.
Can you improve the grade at all?
That?
I mean, right, you're pretty inconsistent there on grade.
Yes, and that was the, and again, is the original grade, let me... These first few pages are the open ditch. Again, the open ditch is in a pretty decent condition. It's rather uniform. We have what the design grade is on the, as the darker line here, but where the survey grade was, it's actually been overexcavated, which is not, not bad. The tile starts here, so there is a bit of grade. There is some elevation that could be green there.
If you gain a foot or foot and a half, a yowlet?
Something like that, yeah. And then as far as the grade is concerned, these original sections don't seem to be too bad for cover. We would need to use that foot, foot and a half to maintain the same level of cover for that larger-sized pipe. As far as the...
Well, you got three foot now over the top of it?
Yes.
Okay.
As an average. But then, yeah, there are some sections where grade could be improved or made more consistent.
Well, you got, you got a section in there where you deviate and then you go to about a one-one grade for nothing.
Yeah, it's, it was just when they were installing it all by hand.
Right.
They would get to hills and then they would, they'd sure up because they didn't want to be that deep. There are some sections that I wouldn't want to go to, make the beginning too steep because there are areas out that are lower. You can see here there are sections that start to lose their cover. If I zoom in there a little bit to show the depth there, you're starting to lose some. But yes, that's, and again, we, without getting people together, these projects can get both expensive in materials and in engineering quickly. So I don't want to, don't want to design something all T-slash and I's dotted that people don't want. So where we're kind of at...
It's an opportunity for landowner feedback.
Right, yes, because moving forward, we would be getting into the more refined, not something that could necessarily be built off of, but something that I could say with one-hundred percent confidence, we could get to that stage because I don't want to be selling something that's impossible. So there is a bit more preliminary design that we need to go into it. That's the stage we're at right now.
How, how many feet is the fifty-four inch?
The fifty-four, and then that, if that gets us good transition into the cost estimate, these are, this is very rough. This is very rough and it's very conservative with its costs. Again, because I don't want to undersell and then, you know, shock people afterwards. The fifty-four would be twenty-eight hundred feet. Yeah, right, yeah, approximately. The whole thing using new pipe prices and the original lengths, this doesn't take into account any sort of bends or anything, but like I said, it is rather conservative with its estimate. To do the whole main is two point nine, yeah, or an average of twelve hundred dollars an acre per, just an average per acre. That's not how it would be paid, mind you. Reclassification process for the improvement would redistribute what those benefits are. The factors that weigh heavily into reclassification are area, so the amount of land draining into it, the soils or the wetness factor, how wet that parcel is, the proximity factor, how close to the facility you are. The closer you are, the higher your benefit. The use factor, the more of the facility you use, the higher the benefit. And then lastly, land use. That takes into account the ownership of any roads, both gravel and hard surface. The Secretary of Roads Department is a landowner, just same as the actual landowners themselves. Any state highways, railroads, they all pay for the benefit that they've received. And because they're using the land differently, shed water faster than I have to go for land, they, that's where that land use factor makes up that difference, and they pay higher on that percent benefit for the lands that they have draining into them. So the per acre cost is just for a comparison sake, that's again, not how it would be divvied out.
What would the project per acre?
Uh, just, it's one thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars, but just based off of this. So that's why I'd say approximately twelve hundred dollars an acre. That's pretty typical in the realm of improvement projects that I have seen.
Nine miles per acre.
The main in total is, sum this up, the main in total is just over nineteen thousand feet. So three point six miles.
Want to give them some idea on how it would vary? Some, some would pay four hundred dollars an acre, some would pay two thousand something.
Typically, a, a rule of thirds from that cost per acre. Some will pay a third, some will pay the average, and some will pay a third or up to a time and a half of that. Some that benefit the, the most may pay two times that just based on the layout and the wetness, just based on the lay, the lay of the land. Glad to ask, the landowners, you know what your situation is now, and I don't know how much tile you can add to this and not have the same problem if people are going to add tile. Ten years from now, fifteen, is it going to be large? So the top, the, the main that we put in was the short one, the three-quarter.
And that's throwing it out there.
And that's, and that's, that's a good point. This is, this is at the fifty-four, that's that low end of the design spectrum. That's, that's assuming you have good surface drainage. You know, in, in districts that are interested, they're airing towards the three-quarter or, or the inch.
Does a patterned tile farm need more all wet, or does it just slow down the overall?
This?
Is that the drainage down more, or how does that work?
What these design figures, the capacities are showing is assuming full utilization. So it's, it's assuming every acre that can get to it is getting to it. So whether it's whole pattern titled or, or not, the design is under the assumption that everything is.
Reason to build more is because you think in the future it may be more heavy drinking?
Potentially, yeah.
That, that's where your drainage coefficient comes in for how many inches of water per day it will remove. If you have a three-inch drain and you have a half-inch drainage coefficient, you're looking at six days versus one-inch drainage coefficient. You cut that half, obviously. And there was a project that was recently built, Drain eighty-four, they just did a one-inch coefficient improvement there, just here in the last couple of years.
Think we've done more three-quarters than anything.
Yeah, it's got three-quarters as well.
It's a, that's a popular point as well.
And, and back to Tyler's point of this informational meeting is to get feedback, like you were just asking, so that he can design everything you guys want, so.
Or if you wanted at all.
Well, it's, it's a bit there.
It's on both ends of that spectrum, you know, you know, slow or throttle up, you know.
Or, or in the middle.
Right, yeah, wherever people feel they'll be, they'll be best served.
When it comes to the payments, does that stretch out over the period of time?
That's a great question. The code allows for no fewer than ten years and no more than twenty. On something like this...
For stamp warrants.
For, for stamp warrants. It's a, it's a five percent for the warrants from the, from the county. But I would think on something of this magnitude, it would be the twenty. Words in anybody's mouth, but that would be typical.
Do you have any of this paper, the landlords, the landowners?
I don't have it with me right now, but anyone that would like to just stop up at our office here in town, I could run as much, as many copies of whatever you'd like to have to take with you.
How many landowners are you talking about here?
The, I have the... No, I, I think I should be fine. I have the total acres, thank you. The total acres is two thousand four twenty-nine point nine five. And as far as a rough count here...
Twenty-nine? You had it off first time here.
Say that again. Two thousand forty-nine?
Uh, twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred?
Yeah, twenty-four twenty-nine, I believe, but yeah, twenty-four hundred.
So how many percent tile? I've been trying to put on, I can't even... Which part are we talking?
Are you talking right into the ditch?
My soup told me, sir.
Yeah, I don't, it's not that, it's not that jack, uh, gall, but I'm just chucking it up with always bringing a depth, the hole's pretty good depth, but that's good, it's poor drainage, so bad.
They're talking about wanting to pull it.
Yeah.
Tyler, do you want to pull up the survey or go back to the survey steps from the beginning?
Yeah, real rough counts, I'm thinking there's approximately twenty landowners just by, just by name on the current assessment schedule.
Twenty-one hundred acres. Oh.
So yeah, at the beginning, there's a decent, you know, if you're looking at between the three and five foot of cover on the existing third with a decent drop into the ditch that could be utilized for that size increase without having to do anything significant to that ditch downstream.
Tyler, you happen to know when the survey was done on that?
Uh, it would have been, yeah, it would have been early this, this spring.
Okay, because that was cleaned out the end of last year, that first mile.
Yes, okay.
That would explain why we have good depth and stuff there.
Seem to have five new blowouts, don't we? Yeah, and that, that blowout's always down there and then.
Yeah.
Like a bend area. It's a vulnerable factor.
You got any ideas that there's wetlands there?
It's, I don't know the classification. It isn't now. Well, that's...
It might be prior converted.
I was gonna say.
Adverted, that's what it is.
Yeah, okay, that's the converted step, that's, that's the good. Anything that's, that's an FW or a farmed wetland, that's beneficial to know about because that's what the NRCS will consider converted in any improvement case.
We have done a project where they didn't check and it turned into a disaster for farm owners.
Yes, yeah, and that's the, the availability for the district to help can only be accomplished if the district knows about it. Ultimately, it's the landowner's responsibility if something like this goes on and those wetlands are considered converted. It's not something that retroactively that the district is, even, even as the project goes, it's not something that the district is responsible for.
I don't even know if there's any acres available for...
And that's, that's a question too. I don't know what the banks have.
There wasn't at one time. I haven't heard of any.
And they're getting more expensive all the time as well, just like everything. So yes, it's, it's my recommendation to get that, make sure you have those certified determinations.
Because last time they were at twenty thousand.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt it, yeah. But Roger's talking mitigation credits for any converted wetlands. It's typically been right around that one-to-one acres for mitigation. And there are banks that build the wetlands and then sell off the, the credits for things like this, but they're charging a pretty hefty per acre price for those. And like Roger said, in the, in the, in and around the twenty thousand an acre.
We're truly involved in projects here, like a year ago, that you're trying to take these wetlands and, or some of these low areas, turn them into wetlands?
Yes, yep, we, yeah.
What's happened to that?
Uh, there are, what, what is it, four or five? That are, that are going towards landowner meetings for that. Additionally, with the water quality initiative, the bigger amount of money that states but allocating towards wetland development, there are two that we're in the works of getting service for right now. So it's, but this tile goes right through there.
It doesn't mean that they aren't determined to wetland by the ASCS.
Right, you're, you're talking, you're talking different things there, but what Billy's leaning on is, I think this tile system was one of those for that you're talking about. So he's connecting the dots there.
Oh, yeah, I guess I can't.
I, I got a landlord that's got twenty acres of that. It's a real low area, and we're talking about, he was talking one time about putting into that wetlands that you were talking about.
Okay, well, I, I have to make sure that they don't, that they don't overlap.
Oh, now all of a sudden, now we're gonna put tile, we're gonna increase the tile into that, maybe become like fourteen or sixteen running through there.
I do.
So one of, one of the things with those projects is you're, you're not restricted with your drainage, it's just rerouting the water from the tile into the buffer land and then back into the tile to pull the nutrients out on its path down the stream. On its path down the stream, so it's it's not one or the other, you can do both.
Yeah, doing one doesn't mean that you couldn't do the other, the thing that we want to make sure of though. Is that if something was planned there, we don't put good tile right up the middle of it. And then it'd have to be, you know, spend good money and then the wetland spend its good money and counteract.
What, that would be, I have to say, we we need to tile? Or are you gonna put solid through there and cut off all the tile, straighten it into this?
It it would, uh, like Kyle said, it would. There's a couple of different ways you could do it, either put solid right up through the middle of it or reroute around it. The the thing is that any of those wetlands uh are all designed to not interfere with the upstream drainage. So in any instance, the installation of a wetland would not. Counteract the improvement project where it decided upon to do it. It would just be, we're being in conjunction to make sure that we didn't put something. Where they were gonna be degraded or remove any sort of dirt, that if we could put something around it to get wet, that'd be better. The any difference would be made up for with the uh water quality initiative. Any of the rerouting or wetland fees are all being picked up. On that state water quality line.
It's it's kinda flat for one of those projects, though, isn't it, Tyler?
No, I would, I, it's, they're they're ranging as far as they're, and and. The big selling point of them is that they are not to be a burden to the landowners or any districts. That they may find themselves in, so. For that reason, I've always been hearing that they're they're not flat, they're pretty, they're pretty all encompassing of. What it takes to get one of those on the ground, including the easements and the. The land costs and everything like that. So.
My mind, it'd work better if you had grain.
Trying to think, one would have, that discussion have been talked over those sites?
That would have been in February?
Oh yeah, it would have been late winter.
Yeah, it was in February, wasn't it?
I'll see if I can.
That sounds right.
So it was like. Eight sites we looked at, four, ten minutes.
Last last summer would have been meetings for it. And then there was some time for uh idols to get in contact with landowners. Gage there, uh, how open, how receptive they were to those ideas. And then I think there were the four or five.
Four of them, yeah.
Right, four that came back here.
I didn't remember one up by Sway City, I thought they were.
Yeah, it was, it was in this district.
Was there three south?
There were, yes, there were three of them south and then the one of. Um, one option two is that uh one thing we we have done. Is give. Uh in the district panel, it was talking about eighty-four, uh that went to bid, we're a long ways from bid yet. Uh but that went to bid with the three different alternates for the different drainage coefficients, the half inch, the. Uh three-quarter and the inch. And then based on how those costs came in. That was where the decision ultimately was was made. Uh because then it's not estimates, you know, you've got hard numbers in hand. From today. What the path forward would be would be to take the input here and put that towards the. Engineers report that will then be filed with the board. As trustees later this year. Forty days after that is a public hearing, everyone is formally notified. And let know of the time, we come back, that's where we have the actual decision. On what is approved and what goes forward towards. Any sort of bid letting, final plans of bid letting. So we're a, we're a ways off from that yet, but any, again, like any information here. Any sort of, any kind of support or opposition is always.
Public comments.
Yeah, any other questions? I looked into the.
Here, but I don't. Don't, if it doesn't have sections on here.
Yeah, I I got more information up at the, up at the office, I I'll make sure that that's.
I mean, you you can look at it here.
Yeah, that that is the.
It's, I think it's the same district, but it's a different line.
Yeah, that's that's actually the low that is right on.
Or is it, or is it in this?
It is right here. Right at the center of such a thirty.
It borders the.
Yeah, yep.
It it's right on the, it is right on the mains for this, for this district. It's that area that I showed on the profile where the main gets really shallow through there.
So that would be, that would be on this line. It stops at.
We looked into it.
Again, one does not undo that, does not undo the other. If anything, it would probably be beneficial to that wetland to have an improved out of that. Right, but that would really give her any right question of is one or able to get away from going.
April twenty-first, I think we talked about. North of Blair's acre.
Yeah, no, but then it goes through the, another branch goes through the.
Always do that section.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess my question is, do you guys wanna spend a lot of money and get a detailed engineer's report? And get and get a temporary bid.
Bids are down the path.
They'll be down the path, but if you want a detailed engineer's report, it's gonna cost you money.
Right, engineers, the engineer's reports, um. We've been getting them done right around uh twenty-five thousand. Uh that, and and we're at least half of the way now. Towards towards that with the survey and uh the tile capacity, really now all it is is putting it into words. And having a hearing. Uh and then uh Paul, putting the what's left is putting the polish on that preliminary design. Making sure that. What we. What size is the most we will go to and what those grades are gonna look like?
Well, and whatever feedback you guys share today, Tyler incorporated in the report or can direct it that way, so. Whatever your thoughts are, feel free.
So when they put the fifty-four inch tile, then you had to put a lot of. That all depends on the soil conditions. We have been allowing the spoon installation. If they're with their excavator bucket, if they're able to form the bottom, they put a plate on, form the bottom of the trench. So it cradles it, if the soil conditions allow, that's. In my opinion, one of the better ways to do it, because then your your whole pipe is just being supported by the insitute soils. If the soils uh. Don't allow, then we require the the rock up to the spring line. Uh that is for, and I'm talking uh reinforced concrete pipe installation here. Um I don't typically recommend, especially on something this large that you go to the plastic. Uh but that requires rock. All around, and then that rock would be, that amount is in their insulation cost. Uh the only time that we pay for any additional rock is if the soils are bad enough. That they had to put it under the pipe, excavate that. Where soil under and rock back up to the uh actual grade line. That's when the additional rock is paid, elsewise, it's all in the installation pipe. Installation price for the pipe. So that goes into your per linear foot.
How many people signed a petition?
Quite a few of them.
Yes.
Tyler did a lot of the legwork on that.
Yes.
Is there any way that you could put in a smaller tile next to the old tile nearby?
That is something that could be done, a a relief tile, um. The thing to consider there is that. The the type sizes don't scale linearly, right, it's all of, because it's. Uh pi times your radius square, it it really. The air, the cross-sectional area really increases, um. And the reason I say that is because to get the same amount with the capacity that your thirty has right now. You're still probably looking at something like a at forty-two or a forty-eight. And then you you've got. A decent amount of your capacity there, but you're still relying on an aging a hundred-year-old system. That at some point is gonna give, and then. You get into the area of do you, is that, it it's still a district facility, so you still have to repair it. Right, so then you're you're looking at putting in money to replace the thirty-inch tile, sometimes it's just easier to just. Out with one, in with the new, and then it's just, you know, all in one, all in one shot. Additionally, um as far as any. By the tile connections, everybody's gonna want their tanning system to be hooked into the new, so then what ones do you leave? For the old. You know, so it's just kind of, uh, if you put the same size, you put the same thirty in and you just did. Fifty percent of them and say, well, is that really, now is that really fair if you split the acres all, so that's. That's just. It's possible. It's just, is it worth?
It's messy.
Yeah, right, yes, is it worth the mess that you?
Well, if you dig in a hole, you just will put a bigger one in. Any more comments? If not, we will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
What we gonna, we gonna go in here?
Well, we'll have a discussion after we close the hearing.
Okay.
Sure.
Absolutely, yes, and I'll be around the.
Make a second.
Any questions, I am.
I'll make the second, do a roll call.
Yeah, I heard you here, sorry. Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're up to the decision on DD sixty-sub four for the improvement project. Anybody here totally against it? How many are totally for it?
I looked into the line, it looked like it brought me a lot of money.
It will.
Retired farmer.
Any other comments?
I guess I need to press back up on my part. I got one part, I think we were talking three different parts there for me. A lot I don't have a problem with, I don't think the other two.
You know, that's where we start getting into the discussion of, of how far do we go? If it's not as needed up in the upper reaches, I'm I'm just not sure where people are, I'll have the. Discussions up at the board with people after, you know, here. Um but you don't have to go all the way, if everybody up to the, and that then shifts where your benefit, where the max of your benefit lies, right? Because you then had an upper or lower, one that was improved, one that wasn't.
Any other discussion on it? If he, if we go ahead and do a proposal, he'll do half, three-quarter and one. Proposal. Would be our recommendation. I can't see one person.
Some of that's already spent, like it said. To get to this point.
Yeah, we've got. Got a little over ten now, I think, just with the the survey. But yes.
You said, no, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. You said you were being conservative, are you being conservative high or low?
With with my uh engineer's estimate cost, I'm, that's that's high.
So do I have a recommendation by the board on DD sixty-sub four improvement project?
I guess I'd make motion to move forward and proceed to full report, I guess, what else would you like in there?
Uh what I'm hearing, full report with. Uh feasibility and cost estimates of the half-inch drainage coefficient, the three-quarter inch drainage coefficient, and the one-inch drainage coefficient.
And I also like to know if there's wetlands in there that are not priorly converted.
Yes, would would you like?
Send a letter to every landowner.
Send a letter requesting the wetland.
Yeah, to every landowner.
Absolutely. And that that will go out ASAP, that won't wait for the report.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yes, I'll work with Marge to get that.
So your motion is for half, three-quarter, one-inch coefficient, and for him to send out determinations on all of.
And moving forward with the report and everything, yeah.
Okay. I'll second your motion, is there any more discussion? Hearing, no, do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks all, thank you, again, that's all actually proved.
You wanna give them a timeframe, Tyler?
Uh, yes, I am depending on. The response on wetland determinations I like to give, cuz those can be. If you don't have them already, to. Uh but I like to release that amount of time. I thought is. Late summer, early fall, I could. For that way, you have plenty of time for harvest and for motivation and everything like that, if you have the right guys in. Have that formal hearing after harvest later this year. Formal hearing after harvest later this year.
And then you have. You're planting over, crops will grow.
Good, yes.
Otherwise, I mean, it's just, it's landlords.
The.
Landowners.
District pays damages on any.
But is that money industry coming from market?
Well, it helps from that, where the district pays. For the damages that it's done to itself, so that's you like, that's not the county that pays it, the district pays. The damage that you know, for the crop that's run down, and then.
On your tape, from the left hand and putting it in the right.
Pulling out of my pocket, I turned around and paid that.
Yeah, in in some regards, yes. Uh, but the, you know, the district is more than just those right on top of the, uh, top of the line, so. It does benefit those that are more damaged, and then we consider a future payment, which is typically an additional. Uh, loss yield based off the soil mix and action that takes place, so we survey on all of the heavily disturbed.
Everything about that, right?
And uh. Submit that, everyone on whom the destruction is done, a little by a violation here. And they get the damages reports submitted to them when they get the notification. So. At that time, you have the ability to uh. Object or suggest what your damage is. So that's all, that's all stuff.
Tyler, do you care if we finish? Your loose ends here, can you go ahead and visit with them?
Okay.
You're not bothering us now.
Just kick me out, I'll go talk. I'll go peddle my wares wherever you come.
Okay, you go ahead and answer their questions and 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 we'll we'll finish a few loose ends here for the day. Mr. Stecker, do you have any board report?
I have a central I O two on the tension center meeting Friday. Thought it was next week, but I just got the agenda sent out this morning, so I'll check out that later.
Yes, I.
I just.
I got wellness meeting tomorrow morning. Calls about drainage and some of that. I got a question, if anybody wants.
No one's watching right now.
Well, if somebody wants to see what the meeting was today, how do they?
Currently, that's up to me, this. That's not the county's owl.
Yeah, but that's the counties, so it should be for public knowledge, I don't think so.
So why don't, why can't I use the county equipment to record a county meeting?
I didn't say you could. I'm just asking how people get this, if they wanna watch it, how how they can get. I've had people ask me, I'm like, I don't know if it's in first floor or if it's available for county people.
I'm testing it out and verifying a few things, and then most likely looking at sharing it online eventually, and just. It's making sure everything's gonna work and reviewing it for now, so.
Everything.
My other question is the last Tuesday after the meeting, I felt kind of odd, the one year apart in the back parking lot, having a private meeting. It just looked odd, because I mean, you could've seen me, boom, you're gonna cover some of them. I fell off the ceiling, I just thought it was odd. I just thought, it just looked funny, because once you guys see me, I get big, and then you tell.
I had, didn't get big, so whatever.
People see it, they.
So so was, so what's your opinion on using this county equipment to report a meeting?
It's for public knowledge, and they can get to it. If the people can get to it, it's it's like, she's made, and somebody else sent us a year to, or whatever, a year ago, and they told you no, and it's like, well, they wouldn't get it, did they?
That's their choice, or they're on the.
If you want your two ditch ones to get it, put it nice, you have to, it was renewed that, that's within your own terms. And you deny it every time, you guys, as a board, you voted hard to do it.
Or they can come and talk to Tim and give her a little stick, and boom, they got it. Off her voice thing.
Yep, we'll keep, keep on going.
Alright.
So what's what's your guys' opinion?
We're not having an opinion right now, we're up to die.
I got care connection seven noon, and I went on the night.
We've been having meetings on the ambulance, we've met with, tried to meet with all the town ambulance. People, representatives. Uh, we're all in agreement, in fact, they need help.
They all need help?
Yeah.
Even more?
Yeah, even more.
So they need more help with people, not the money.
No, they need facts.
Everybody needs people.
Everybody needs people. Uh, we had a safety meeting last Wednesday.
Well, I'd like to.
And you guys know most of what happened on that. That's about all that I've got, can I?
Got some order review letters that Judy sent out, that I have to look at, speaking on the topic. Those are just. Be such to guys that she wanted you to be aware of. And then Doug had asked about the ATV, ATV laws, and whether we had to pay ours, or if ours was still valid. Um, Doug had sent me an email back this morning. That said, um, it appears that there's, which are a few provisions in ours that are being passed along with the new law. So he's suggesting that at this. This is actually the agenda.
And I thought this.
Just the state supercedars, he wouldn't let me build a second one.
It looks like local facilities, however, I doubt the district regulations, which are.
And then ours restricts it for any county property and gravel bits. Just that, so. Let's have him come up and will.
Um, so have him come up next week?
Yeah, because I think we're gonna have to put some.
Somebody, somebody's gonna need a bill.
As you guys have probably noticed, the big tree on the corner here is. Everywhere, so we got a couple of. We can have a little bit, so they will be moving that tree.
It's a pine tree.
The pine tree that is making.
Do not, so long as everything is served, we probably have to. But if we could just get on.
Question, like, can you? Why isn't it that I lie out under my breath? And you were gonna throw me out, just men sitting here in public disruptive meetings, you can't.
Right, but that that's still the. Other thing.
That's a particular question, why would I be thrown out and yet these men are sitting here in disruptive meetings? And have one of your own people comment on it? And they aren't asked to.
So any of those. Doubts or anything?
Thank you. I just want to give it up to you, depend yourself, Roger. But it's, there's a untape, and are able to.
Serpentine.
How should I take, just throw me out of the whole class of people around?
Haven't heard any of them laugh, so. Anything else?
Okay, so, and then at the last meeting, you guys had suggested. Because to everything to be done, that's a claim space, so we can, we can tell that we can.
So I'm going to, because I thought we were gonna have a meeting, so I.
Another day that week, or has this happened before? How do we do this? Because if we can't look, if we move it up, then that means we have to do tomorrow. If we move it back, then all of those will be late. So is there a way that we will, you got?
Can we do it electronically? Can you guys hop on for ten minutes?
Just to prove the claims, if nothing else.
My brother goes to the north house.
I did that on the side.
Yeah, if we do it, just do it right away.
You can be here and then.
No, I can't be here, I'd be here by.
Okay, and you guys are both here, Mr.
Second.
Second, sorry, okay, second, sorry. Um, and then do we have to, need somebody a chair by chair, we can just do it?
We'll do it electronically.
Okay. So we'll have it, we'll make sure you're electronic, so August second, yeah, it's back, um, we'll just have to. Because otherwise, I don't.
She may have sent me a text in the morning.
I can do that.
Or just call.
I was last week about the countywide breakfast, I have a lot of speakers today, so if you guys know, if you can be able to. So I'm guessing you and Jack, you are gone.
And they will, this, if the whole meeting is done, they will.
If you got two going, that's pretty good.
Closest to it. The most of this.
Um, reminder, Farm Bureau, appreciate, appreciate your picnic is tonight from five thirty to seven at the fairgrounds. So first, well, if you can go to that.
The management board is gonna be ninety-five when they have it.
Yeah. It is, it's always really hot, so and then next week, I may agenda. Sushi Wellness Committee, and we have a closed session with David Stein, uh, DD boy, DD. Summit Carbon Solutions update is going to be next week.
I didn't know where to hit the letter from.
The closed session is at fifteen, there's not a time for Summit Carbon Solutions, um, yes, but we will be getting time for that. And then you have quarterly reports from auditor recorder, sheriff, the pet, and affairs.
That's gonna refer.
So that's, that's next week, the twenty second. Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Quarter reports are, they're long right now, they can't do them, like what I thought it was.
No, quarterly reports are for the.
No, but I mean, you said, I thought you said quarter reports from some too, they just wanna talk to us again.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a project update on the summit.
Yeah, that's on that bright line, I asked them, they're going to meetings, even though you invited. They're going strictly. Steep peeps and tougher officials.
I don't know, it's gonna sound, they, but there's dial, and they're in their farm.
I was really fast during. And and he was the highest.
Um, these letters that you looked through, you just.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she just gave. Um, okay, so we will be doing a meeting, I guess second.
Yeah.
Cause Roger, he can call, and Greg can call.
They, they, anybody can call at any time, so if they're able to, they definitely. And Derek can set that we can set up teams, or whatever you need on your. And that's something that we guys want him to.
You always got cell phones, guys.
No.
Right.
Right.
Not always.
Well.
Depends on where you're at.
Yeah.
These new phones ain't as good as the old ones, I know that much.
Yeah, and you and you can always call him too, and we've done. You could call.
We're calling our numbers, yours or mine, or Kyle's.
Yeah.
Just directions we can.
One, I just stay whether we can call or not.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's, that's all. That's it for me.
Thank you. Just being. Tyler, you got anything else?
I don't think so, how that uh change order. That go, that got approached, okay, good, I'll let the contractor know that they were, so, they're making great progress up there. Uh, on the last twenty-eight. They had. Close to a couple hundred feet in. Or so, so they were, they were hoping. Pay up, they just submitted, and one more, and they'll be done, so that'd be. That'd be nice. That all finished. Anything else for me? Otherwise, I'm just gonna pack, you know.
Maybe a turn.
Hopefully, they'll get the. Still waiting for when the comes. Everything's delayed.
Really?
Yeah, I remember there's there's.
Yeah.
Same reserve's only about fourteen nine hours. Uh, yeah, right around twenty, I think, but eleven wrong petitions, so that's.
A lot of it. Once a farm near Southwood, not.
The guy at the very end, the long one, you know?
It's.
Yeah, who was the guy?
That's what he made the sound second, which is unfortunate.
He had a good excuse.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's.
Also, a bunch of the savings are gone.
Right.
It's understandable, the way the law is written.
See you, pal.
See you later.
Good, see ya.